Subscribe and never miss a meeting. WROK Cable TV on YouTube.
All right, perfect. Well, I'm going to call to order the August 23rd, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to just make a quick round of introductions tonight. We have two commissioners that can't be with us tonight, but we do have a quorum, so we'll be able to conduct the business of the people this evening. I'll start down here, and we'll just kind of go through and say who we are. Mr. Macy?
Melanie Macy.
Pat Perush.
Erin Leo.
Paul Break.
Mike Fournier.
Kyle Dubach.
Monica Hunt.
Melanie Howell.
All right, and now we're going to have a quick invocation given by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask if you can stand, please do so. We gather here tonight to make important decisions on behalf of all our neighbors in our great city. We ask for the wisdom, strength, and resolution to make the very best decisions for the community and for the generations of Royal Oakers to follow. In an era of challenges and waning hope, let us take a moment and reflect upon what we have in this community. We are thankful for a safe, welcoming, and vibrant city to call home. We are thankful for our police officers, firefighters, city staff, DPS, and everyone who will help keep our city functioning every day. We are thankful for all the community volunteers that give their free time to make a difference in the lives of so many. We are thankful for our over 50-plus parks, including two new parks, Centennial Commons and Normandy Oaks, and all the recreational programming we have. We are thankful for all the small businesses that make up Royal Oak a great place to shop, dine, and spend time in. And we are thankful that our community is made up of so many different people from all generations that lift each other up and take pride for what we have achieved together. Without question, the world is tense, but let us remind ourselves what a great place it is to live in Royal Oak. Let us be kind, be the light, and be what we expect in others. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, next up on the agenda is a proclamation honoring Common Ground Sanctuary celebrating 50 years. All right, okay. Well, come on down. Let's, uh, we're going to try something new. This is the first proclamation that we've actually done in a city hall like this, so. This is the proclamation honoring Common Ground Sanctuary celebrating 50 years. Whereas in the early 1970s, the sanctuary was founded by the United Community Services volunteers to give residential counseling to a growing number of runaway homeless youth in Oakland County. And whereas in 1971, a group of students, parents, and community leaders concerned about a rise in substance abuse and suicide among young people in the community, Common Ground merged with the sanctuary. And whereas, the merger created a single community source and allowed both entities to significantly expand their services. And whereas, over the past 50 years, Common Ground Sanctuary has moved young people, adults, and families from crisis to hope through empowerment, collaboration, innovation, diversity, and inclusion services, more than 80,000 individuals annually. And whereas, Common Ground offers 16 programs from immediate crisis intervention to support and educational, to long-term bridging and monitoring to ensure continued success. And whereas, crisis intervention starts with Common Ground's 24/7 helpline text chat staffed with professionally trained volunteers, the mobile crisis intervention and recovery teams going to where the help is needed, sober support for the first 23 hours of detoxification, walk-in services, and short-term crisis residential unit. And whereas, mental health support and education are provided through the Empower Initiative, Growing and Healing Support Group, survivors and victim assistance, mentoring and parent education. And whereas, Common Ground not only gives immediate shelter at the shelter, but moves individuals to their homes with a step forward and a graduated apartment program. And whereas, all of these programs bring a brighter future for each individual and family impact community in the most positive manner. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Mike Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, Dubai here congratulate Common Ground Sanctuary for their 50th anniversary and extend our heartfelt gratitude for an incredible difference they make in Royal Oak and the surrounding communities. It is my honor to present this proclamation, and let's give a round of applause. We were talking about things earlier about how thankful we are for the things in our community, and certainly your organization is one of those things as well. And we're just so grateful for the work that you do, the lives that you save, the lives that you affect, and the lives you make better.
Thank you so much.
And I will hand it over if you...
Well, thank you. On behalf of our President and CEO Heather Ray, all of my colleagues and the people we serve, thank you to the city of Royal Oak. Obviously, this is a very important community to us, home of the sanctuary, as you mentioned. We are celebrating 50 years, and we look forward to the next 50 here in Royal Oak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care. All right, that brings us to item six, which is approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perush. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We had an agenda set. All right, item number seven, public comment. Just a few ground rules before we commence public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. As there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening, this will be the only opportunity for the public to address the City Commission. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual city commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium, right up here. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, so comments are limited to three minutes or less, and we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Please note that typically we don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we're taking notes, and those questions will be addressed when the topic is discussed, or if the topic's not on the agenda, we'll ensure that city staff can follow up and get answers as needed. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Many people email us, stop us in the street, talk to us, getting ice cream at the grocery store, and we do appreciate input from everyone because it helps us make better decisions as your representatives. So with that, who's first? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Pat McGee, 45, 104 Main Street Avenue. I've spoken here before, but I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 9, 6E. I am in support of the stop sign at Crest Hill Avenue, so I am in support of my request for a stop sign. So here I come down and ask for support. Thank you.
6E, right?
6E.
Okay, who's next? Mr. Ashen.
Just a few notes. The painting is continuing on the building. If you all noticed, it's now gray and blue. That blue stripe will follow along to the other side of the building, same with the colors. There is one other special thing that's going to be done that hasn't been decided, and when that gets decided, I'm going to have you wait and see what happens. Not telling. Sorry about that. Also, today they closed off 7th Street. That angle is now been closed, so 7th Street is not open to Main Street. The expansion of the parking lot, that's the first step to get done, and I think it is scheduled for sometime in late September, so I'm going to be moving about 67 people somewhere for about a week and a half to maybe two weeks for their parking lot to get expanded. But I do have a thank you to Tony Randazzo. I don't know, I know some of you know him. He is the developer that's going to develop the property across from the fire department, that empty lot. He has been a big help to us, and he's helping us again this year, and I want to thank him tremendously for all the help he's given us, and it is much appreciated by the folks at Royal Oak Manor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashen. Mr. Harrison.
Good evening. My glasses fog up, so I have to pull it down. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. Again, au fait. Zoning ordinance changes. We are still not clear on what the Commission will do regarding the zoning changes proposed by the Planning Commission. We know that Commissioner Douglas has proposed granny cottages, garage apartments as multiple housing within the single-family housing areas in order to destroy what is known as the suburbs and create an urban environment. We are not clear as to how much public input there will be regarding the zoning ordinance changes, or if there will be just jammed down our throat. Master Plan Consultant. I do not have an objection to engaging a consultant to assist with the master plan update. My concern is that you will select somebody that will support your agenda regardless of whether it is a bid or no bid contract. Ideally, the consultant interview process will be conducted in more than one session and open to the public, so we will have an opportunity to voice our opinion and suggest questions to be asked of the applicants. However, this procedure did not turn out well with the selection of the current city manager. Several substantive questions that were requested remained unasked. And you will remember, I appeared before you after that and went through about five or six questions that I had asked, and after each one of them, I said, "And nobody asked." So anyway, consultants, speaking of consultants, what is with the number of consultants engaged for various functions, including how to spend the $25 or $28 million windfall money that is to be allocated by the federal government? The city departments prepare budget requests each year. They should know how best to use the additional funds. Similarly, why all the feather bedding with the numerous assistants hired recently? Public Responsibility. By exceeding the borrowing limits stipulated in the city charter, you have compromised our bonding rating by building a new city hall, a police station, rather than focusing on improvements that would benefit the residents. I don't know how it is in your family, but in our family, the family members get what they need before I get anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, who's next? All right, we'll go with Ms. Wagner and Mr. Sackett next.
Janice Wagner, 600 Wellesley. On tonight's agenda is a vote authorizing a traffic study on 11 Mile after the 11 Mile Bridge is rebuilt. Can everybody hear me? This is definitely a good sign of good planning and common sense. Only gather data during normal conditions. But you also have an RFQ to hire a firm to expedite the rewriting of our master plan, a plan that also requires gathering data in order to make good decisions. One need only look around this room to see the effects, I'm sorry, I'm fogging up too, of COVID are ongoing. These are not normal conditions. COVID has affected not only our health, but our economy and our lifestyles. Do you believe everything will go back to normal, or will there be long-term effects such as inflation? It'll increase our taxes and possibly mortgage rates, and has already increased the cost of construction. All of these will have an impact on demand. More people will permanently work from home. This allows people to live anywhere and keep their jobs. This makes our convenient location less important when people decide where to settle. Further, how many of our downtown offices will still be viable? What long-term effects will result from the eviction moratorium and suspending that? Nationally, rental rates have gone up 17%. Will the trend to move away from high density continue? We've issued a net total of over 1,500 housing permits in the past 10 years, the majority of which were multifamily. But according to the census, our population only increased by 975. Apparently, if we build it, people don't come. The recent census reveals even more, reveals even before COVID, people were moving away from dense areas, and that has accelerated due to the pandemic. Yet both the mayor and Commissioner Douglas have been very vocal about increasing density and encouraging multifamily affordable developments in single-family neighborhoods, virtually eliminating all single-family zoning as part of the new master plan. Without federal funding, affordable housing will not be built in Royal Oak, as confirmed by Commissioner Peruk during the recent City Commission meeting. Will the businesses in our city, not just the downtown, survive the effects of the lockdown and inability to find workers? What effect will all of this have on Royal Oak's landscape? And these are just a few of the things to consider. Now is not the time to expedite rewriting the master plan. Much like the 11 Mile Study, we should wait until after the pandemic phase of COVID. Common sense and good planning means voting no and reconsidering it again during the next fiscal year, when hopefully we know what the new normal is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Mark?
How's that arm, Mayor? Okay? How's it, what? Your arm? Because I got a lot of complaints about your fastball not being too good.
Well, you're doing too fast.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mark Sackett, General Manager of the Royal Oak Leprechauns. You allowed me to build my Field of Dreams, and I can't thank you enough. We had an amazing summer. We had probably over 15,000 people attend. Overall, I'm sure some of those people were duplicates. The people that, besides your approval on everything, the people that made this possible, someone like John Fidelli, who was really supportive on everything, the people on the ground, Bob, I don't know Bob last night, he's been here forever. Just unbelievable, the support he gave us. Corey, the electrician, in getting some things done. You've got some great people here, and I'm sure they're not perfect, but I don't know who is. But the things that they, the support they gave us, welcoming our teams, welcoming all the things we need to get done was absolutely awesome. Just like, it was an unbelievable summer. You know, we're still working with, I know John's working with Oakland Community College trying to bring back baseball for their school and representing it right at Memorial Park. We're still talking to Lawrence Technology, Lawrence Tech University about bringing their field here, which would bring more traffic. Our team, we had a kid on our team from Utah, I was able to talk to his parents. They stayed at the Royal Oak Hotel, and they're just, we had a lot of people from out of town come in and stay, and they just, you know, they're here. They're here for the city of Royal Oak. They spent their money here. Hopefully, they help the business, communities, restaurants, and everything else. When we started this project, our goal was about $330,000, $350,000 of our own money to put in. Well, I blew it, and I put in about $455,000 after looking at everything. The scoreboard was something we felt we needed to do. We did. You guys delivered with the electricity, providing everything. That was great. The stadium needed a little bit more seating. The seating was old and out of date, and we put seat backs in there, made it a great look, and again, it was extra money we spent. We found some donors. We were able to finance some things, so that was fantastic. But it was just, again, it was, it was an amazing summer for me personally, where I worked my butt off, but at the same time, I think we did it for the people of Royal Oak. We want to use businesses in Royal Oak to continue our growth and development. We've already had several meetings and are moving forward with things to continue our things in Royal Oak. So we are thankful for there. Some things, like I said, really, the only really negative is Mayor Mike's arm. He's got to work on that, so we'll improve there. I'm just kidding you, of course. We put a hole in the fence in order for excavators to get in. It took a while, but we finally got that fixed, so John Fidelli did a great job handling that. We didn't have any Wi-Fi on the field, which kind of limited our being able to stream it the right way, but it's something that John Fidelli is working on. We were able to get these things called jet packs. But otherwise, we missed out on doing a youth camp. My fault. I just ran out of time, and we just had a great, a great summer, and I want to thank you again for allowing us to come in, and we are looking forward to the next nine years, at least nine years, to get this thing going. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for all that you did for Memorial Park. I mean, we were talking about community volunteers and people that come in and make a huge difference. I can tell you, I mean, we all brought our kids there, and, you know, I know some friends that went to a number of games, and just what a great environment, great energy, and, you know, just a win for everybody involved, including the players, all the way through, little boys, little girls being able to go out and, you know, watch some baseball. What a great, what a great event. What a great time.
Well, thank you. We're looking to give back, even give back, so thank you.
Thanks. And I'll do a little training before I come out next year. We'll do high and outside next time. We'll do low and inside.
I don't even see the pitch. I'm sorry.
All right, anybody else tonight? Mr. Karloski.
Hello, Rick Karloski, 418 Virginia.
I'd just like to echo some of the comments that were made on the request for a quote for a new master plan. One of them that I come up is, why is it assumed that we need a new master plan? The statement in the agenda item says that the Planning Commission has decided that we need a new master plan. Exactly why? We have, there are some cleanup areas that we need. If a situation has developed where part of the city has gone from light and industrial to residential? Yeah, but that's not a new master plan. Exactly what is it we're trying to do with this new master plan? The fact that developers don't particularly like what our zoning requirements are, I don't care. I mean, other cities get development into their city without having to rewrite their master plan or jump over hoops and grant numerous PUDs to get development into their town. I would suggest that everybody go up to Rochester itself and look at their storefronts compared to ours on Main Street, with Rochester being a far less desirable location with regards to Woodward, I-696, and 75. So there's something else going on besides our master plan. Again, I know that from watching the Planning Commission meetings that Chair Douglas and the mayor would like to have, allow multifamily, multi-story buildings in our single-family zoning areas. Certainly, I think one was, one comment was on every street corner, or any corner lot should be revised to allow that to happen. Not to mention the side residences or detached residences in the back that could be certainly rented out or used for ABVs. And having been next to an ABV where there was a bit of an altercation, where I got to find out what live fire is all about, I'm a little bit leery about our standards for ABV development and regulating. So my question is, what are you going to do with this consultant? Is he going to just develop another survey that's skewed to get the results that you want, or are we going to actually ask the people what we want early on? And I think there's no better time to do it than right now, since this is an election year. Let's find out what they want before we go spending money for a consultant and change the master plan that we may not even want to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karloski. All right, who's next? Ms. Anderson.
Okay. I'm here to speak to item 10 also on the agenda about the new master plan consultant. I question the premise articulated in the first paragraph of the memo. Quote, "The Planning Commission discussed the city's current master plan and determined that the demographics, goals, objectives, future land use map, and recommended actions are no longer relevant and applicable to the physical development of the city. The Planning Commission unanimously adopted a resolution that the overall changes warrant an entirely new master plan ahead of the statutory five-year review period in 2022." Question one, what specifics about the current master plan led to this sweeping conclusion? Question two, why must all the values expressed so clearly in the current master plan be discarded as no longer relevant? Most people who have moved into the city over the past 15 to 20 years have done so because they approve the neighborhoods, community, and culture fostered by the current master plan. Why are the seven people who are members of the Planning Commission making a decision of this magnitude without widespread publicity and resident input? Why is this project being started a year before the required review period? The city has more than enough projects to finish this year. Why is there such a rush to start work on a master plan? And five, why cannot the current master plan be updated rather than discarded like a smelly old rag? I am also puzzled by the final paragraph that precedes the proposed resolution. You are proposing $300,000 for a consultant to assist in the development of a new master plan. That's a lot of money, and your memo also qualifies that additional funds may be necessary. Question one, doesn't Royal Oak have a qualified planning department? Question two, why would the city plan to spend this large amount of taxpayer dollars for consultants on the master plan rather than giving the task to the current employees who are professional planners? If they need some focused assistance, they could hire relevant consultants for part of the work, of course, for a lot less than $300,000. And three, wouldn't the current city planners be more appropriate than an external consultant due to their deep knowledge of Royal Oak's history and culture? In conclusion, shouldn't any expensive, extensive work on the city's master plan be recommended first of all based on broad community input about what taxpayers, the community's chief stakeholders, want for their community? That would be the democratic thing to do.
All right, who's next? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment and bring the discussion back to this side of the table, and that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay, the consent agenda now consists of City Commission special meeting minutes from August 4th, claims August 13th, August 13th special pay, August 23rd, and August 24th, approval of purchase orders, declaration disposal of surplus property, proclamation resolving to protect and promote publicly funded mental health system, proclamation designating September 2021 as National Recovery Month, proclamation designating September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Month, proclamation designating September 10th to 192021 welcoming week in Royal Oak, award of contract, RFPRO 21-072, public library lighting installation contract modification to contract cap 2115 asphalt resurfacing improvements, memorial ballpark and parking lot, award of professional engineering services, contract for South Main Street and East Lincoln Avenue improvements, and approval of proposed First Amendment to planned unit development 1903 to 1965 East 11 Mile Road. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and presented? Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. That brings us to our first scheduled agenda item topic, which is the approval of the July 2021 Traffic Committee resolutions, and just like magic, City Engineer Donahue is here to bring us up to speed.
Good evening. Apologies, we have a minute delay back there.
Great time.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here to present the recommendations from the Citizens Traffic Committee meeting that was held at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 27th. We have six recommendations for you tonight, and I'll just go through them one by one, and then if there's any questions at the end, I'm happy to answer them. So the first item had to do with, it was item 6A, and this is at the intersection of 12 Mile Road and Fern. The portion of Fern Street that's actually south of 12 Mile Road. It's a little congested there in terms of where people are allowed to park and where they're prohibited, where they have to stop parking close to the intersection. And so what the committee is recommending is shifting a couple of those signs that say, "Don't park beyond this point," or "Don't park this side of sign," shifting them a little bit further south to give vehicles a little more room to get around and get to the intersection, get to the light, and also will not remove any of the existing parking spaces for the properties that are right there. So seemed like a good resolution for everybody involved. So that's moving one sign eight feet south, and then the other sign 13 feet south on Fern Street. The second recommendation here was item 6B. This is at Woodward, where Dugan's Pub is, there's Chester and Ravina that kind of loop around the back of that business. There's Chester and Ravina that kind of loop around the back of that business. There's been some complaints from the residents about truck traffic going through the neighborhood there. There are already no-through-truck signs for, for Ravina, which is kind of the south side there off of Woodward. And so this request is for the other block that's north of Dugans for trucks heading southbound. We did do traffic measurements, found 5% of traffic was commercial, which is a bit high for a residential street. Normally it's 2% to 3%. So the committee is recommending installing one no-through-truck traffic sign on the north side of Chester Road, just west of Woodward. Item 6Z, 6C, this is located near Whittier Park at the intersection of Farnham and Potter. And the issue here is that a lot of, especially when there's like soccer games going on or practices, it gets really congested there. A lot of people park very close to the intersection or even within it, which is a T-intersection. You're not allowed to do that by Michigan law, but not everybody like knows and understands that. So the recommendation here is to install a couple of no-parking-beyond-the-sign signs and a no-parking-this-side-of-sign sign to keep people, the minimum 20-foot distance away from crosswalks. Kind of keep that open and safe for people. Item 6D is a request that we had for East 4th Street. So this is primarily east of Main Street. We have a lot of crosswalks along there that are marked with pavement markings, but there's no actual pedestrian crossing signs, those yellow signs that you'll sometimes see. So the request was that these should all be installed there. When looking at this, the staff committee and also traffic committee felt that that was a bit of sign pollution. It'd be almost, I think it was 30 signs that you would end up installing up and down that corridor. And there really aren't any sight distance issues there where you can't see a pedestrian that's about to enter the roadway. And so they're recommending denying that request for 6D. Item 6E is a T-intersection that's currently unregulated. There's no stop sign there. And so consistent with what we've recommended in the past, at the intersection of Crest Hill and Woodland, we're recommending one stop sign for the T portion, the leg of that T. Just to clarify that that part of the intersection is supposed to stop. And then our final item, 6F, had to do with the 11 Mile Road traffic study. This is something that's kind of been bounced around in-house for a while. There's always questions, should we do a road diet? Should we add something here? Should we add parking? Can we do anything there? I'm hoping to start working on that road in 2024, 2026, and probably somewhere closer to 2030 in a few different segments. And I would like to know what I'm doing ahead of time instead of trying to rush something together. So I wanted to get a traffic study that tells us, is a road diet even feasible? Should we consider anything out here? Could we get some green infrastructure out there? Could we get pad crossing islands? So I don't have any vision in mind with what I'm going for here. I really just want to get the data so we can make some decisions down the line. So I'm sure this will come before you again in the future, but I wanted to keep you in the loop that this is something we're starting to look at. So our recommendation is to go ahead and put an RFP out to get a consultant to do this for us. That's all.
All right, questions? Commissioner Macy.
Thanks, Ms. Donahue. That was quite a mouthful you had with all those recommendations today. For this last one on the 11 Mile Road, it was noted in public comment in the letter as well that this, your plan is to start the study after the construction that's being done on 75 so you can get a view of what 11 Mile is really like. I actually had the opposite concern of the commenter. One of the, one of my concerns about this in general, which I think it's a great idea to do a traffic study, I think because we're redoing this road, we should be thinking about a road diet and how to make this more livable, walkable place as part of our city. But I'm concerned that it is one of the main arteries of our city. And when there is something unusual happening, like the, the construction on 75, it does become more of a thoroughfare. And so I do have this worry that for these main thoroughfares, when we do a road diet, if we haven't considered what happens during those pressure points, then it could be, it could be a problem in the future. So is there any thought about looking at that at all during the time when the construction is happening just to get a snapshot of what it is, is like when there is? I mean, construction's not over just when it's over on 75.
Right. It's something you could look at.
Especially just getting counts to kind of see what happens with the volumes when, when something's going on on 75 and not. You know, a general rule of practice is you design for the regular everyday, not the special circumstances that are going to be annoying for a few months or in this case, a few years. But it is something that we could look at. Traffic counts are very quick and easy to get. I don't know that I would have them do a full level of service evaluation of all the intersections and anything like that, but, but getting just an idea of what we could be looking at, that's certainly something I could add in there.
Well, and even I would say, depending on the road design, you know, if there is ever a detour, they may not consider 11 Mile. They may consider 8 Mile instead. You know what I mean? Depending on what you do. Right now, 11 Mile is a good option because it's like a four-lane, five-lane highway there, you know? And sometimes if you make certain design changes, you know, when there are construction or whatever, they take people off on the bigger roads, like 16, 8, et cetera.
Sure.
Any other questions? Commissioner Dubak.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Donahue, looking through this, it appears all six of these motions were adopted unanimously. So no minority report, no real debate or pushback on any of these from the public or from any of the members of the traffic committee?
I, you know, I didn't, I know there wasn't any major debate. I can't say for sure that we didn't have one nay vote on something, but I have to look.
I'm looking through, I'm seeing six unanimous adoptions, so.
If you did your homework, you're better than me, and that's good.
Okay, I'll move for approval of these resolutions as recommended by the traffic committee.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush, discussion? I'll just have to thank the traffic committee again for evaluating these, these issues. I know it takes time and effort and, you know, sometimes things make sense, but they don't make sense. And, you know, we go to data, we look to data, we look to historical experience, and we look to expertise of people who do this for a living, like our wonderful city engineer, Ms. Donahue. And I appreciate the 11 Mile study as well. I think we'll let the data tell us where we need to go. You know, I appreciate. Oh, Commissioner Macy, you got a question?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'm trying to say to Commissioner Dubak is that I noticed that Matt Callahan was always, two of the, two of the people on this. So he was the minority reporter, the one that they didn't approve. So I don't know what that counts, but given that he was a former city engineer, he's somewhat of a minority reporter.
But, but I appreciate you taking the approach of, you know, we could do some really cool things there. It's time. And we've seen residential buildings go up there over the years. We've seen a lot of transition. We still see some things that need to be improved, that affect the neighborhoods. And especially, you know, getting the data, understanding what the flows would look like. I know sometimes there's misconceptions about, you know, you take away lanes and everything slows down. That's not always true, you know? And you design to attract a certain type of, you know, investment on 11 Mile because it is, you know, more and more a neighborhood street, you know, when you think about it. So, you know, appreciate the data telling us what we need to do, you know, as opposed to going in and trying to find data to support it. So it's the best approach. Appreciate your work. All right, well, I'm going to call for the vote. All of us in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to the last thing on our agenda this evening, which is an authorization to prepare and release requests for qualifications, development of a new master plan, and like clockwork, he timed it perfectly with the 1 minute 45 seconds delay. Mr. Twain.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. You do have a request from the planning commission that they considered at their August meeting, asking that you have staff prepare a request for qualifications to redo the entire master plan for the city, which was last done in its entirety in 1999. It actually started in 97 and took two years to finish. Since then, the planning commissions looked at it every five years. And in 2012, there were some amendments to it that were done internally. If we're going to undertake an entire new master plan, the city planning office does not have the staff to do so in a similar fashion. And it's my understanding the commission has budgeted $300,000 in the fiscal year 2122 budget to look at that and potentially take that all on. Our first step would be to do a request for qualifications to try and narrow down the firms and get apples-to-apples comparisons from firms based on their qualifications to do an entire new master plan for the city, a city like Royal Oak, and some of the issues that we'd want to see them address. Particularly the GIS issues and so that you can be a little more user-friendly rather than a simply hard document that, that's currently in place and available on the website. So some things like that that we'd, we'd want in the qualifications. Obviously, background in the communications and engagement, how they're going to go about that. At the last effort to redo the entire master plan, I went back and looked at the list. I believe there were some 36 meetings of a steering committee. There were several six to seven visioning sessions as part of that rewrite, as well as a couple of public hearings at a, at a committee-level kind of task force thing. And then on top of that, there was the planning commission that spent 14 meetings on it as well as two public hearings. So if that's the same sort of approach that we're going to end up with going forward, it would take a lot of effort and staff time just to reply and coordinate those. But the first step would, is to really get concurrence from the city commission as the planning commission has asked that you want to undertake this, that you want to undertake this somewhat early, not really too early. The five-year review would be in 2022. But if we, if you wanted to get it started, I still think it would be probably the end of the year, starting into January before we're really probably got a contractor someone to bring to you for awarding a contract to start. So it's really not early if you look at 2022 as a, a start date. There is a suggested resolution if you've, if you've got questions, but this is simply the beginning step, simply to get it going. The second part of the resolution has to do with the role the city commission wants to have in that. Under the statute, you could just let the planning commission be the final deciding body in approving it. You don't necessarily have to weigh in as, do you want to review it and approve it at the end at this meeting? You could wait until there's a draft document of the master plan that's done because you do have to take a formal action at that time to say, allow us to distribute it out to adjacent communities and things like that. So you would have a formal chance again if you didn't want to make that statement this evening. But staff just simply, and the planning commission, I think, is trying to make sure that we're all on board and ready to go in the same direction.
Questions? Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. You've indicated that this is going to be an entirely new master plan. I was of the understanding that there would be a review of the existing master plan, keeping what we, what works, getting rid of revamping what doesn't work. Would that be a part of the process in redoing this master plan?
Well, you could very easily end up with the very same goals and objectives that are in the master plan right now, just in a new document and a new format. When I refer to it as going to be an entirely new master plan, is each section, each issue, each item that a master plan would address will be looked at with, by the consultant and by the planning commission and this body if you so choose. That's not to say that those goals will change. They could be exactly the same. There may be more. They may be refined. But I think what the planning commission is looking for is that the conditions in Royal Oak changed with a lot more identity units, a lot of developments that's occurred even since 2012. And rather than trying to pick and choose which sections of the master plan to review, they want them to review the whole thing. But it could be very similar document as far as what, what the narrative is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
I've got a couple of questions. One is, you might have heard of public comments, several, several of the commenters were concerned about the new master plan. And I think we partially just addressed it, that some of the goals and objectives probably are going to remain the same, that there's some things that haven't really changed that much. And do you see us in a period of change right now that it makes sense to do this as opposed to waiting until we're farther down the road? That was one of the things asked at public comment.
Well, I think one of the qualifications we're going to have to look at it. There's never a good time. Something else could come in and say, okay, you know, wait, don't do it now. Yes, we're just coming out of COVID. We've got a lot of things that are changing in the retail segment of, of the economy prior to COVID. And because of COVID, the same thing with the office market. I, I guess there's no perfect time to start, but I, I would be bringing this to you next year anyways as part of a five-year review, at least at the planning commission, to say, we've got to do this by statute. We have to look at it. I think it has been a long time since we've looked at the entire thing. And as I said, it may come out with the same finding, but I think it's a good opportunity to reach out, see what people in the community think, so. I don't see the need to wait in the sense of starting tonight. It's going to take us some time to write the request for qualifications. I don't want to start that if we're not on board going forward. After we do that, we'll have to write the actual proposal and get replies and bids. And then you'll have to award a contract to a selected firm.
So I mean, I, you know, I see too that a lot of the goals and objectives will probably be the same. I think I've been squabbling on and off the record with Commissioner Douglas about this for four years. Since we last were talking about whether we should redo this whole cloth or just maybe look at some pieces of it and change it. And I, I feel like she has convinced me that she also is interested in the part that most interests me, which is the community engagement piece of this. So getting the master plan out in front of the public as much as possible and finding out what the vision is of the residents in terms of what we're doing in Royal Oak. If we're just making some changes to zoning and talking about PUDs, that's a lot less interesting to me. But I, what I've heard her say and what I'm hearing you say tonight sounds like community engagement is going to be a big piece of this, that we're going to be getting out there, talking to people, getting input on what they see as the goals and objectives and how they, how they're going to look and change moving forward. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, absolutely. And I just refer back to my earlier comment. There were some 36 formal meetings with a task force that were held at the high school. None of them were held at city hall. They were held at the senior center. They were held in a variety of venues to have, to have large people potentially attend as well as doing vision sessions to actually talk about what their issues were and identify those. Very similar to the city commission's goals and strategic, strategic planning meeting. So, and, and there were at least six or seven of those visioning sessions. I believe the city was divided up into six or seven areas. And there were meetings held in each one of those areas. So it wasn't just one big group coming in. And then the planning commission did spend another 14 formal meetings separate from their normal meetings going through it. There were a lot of meetings held over a two-year period. So yes, community engagement's a big part of it. And with technology now, I think that'll just do nothing but expand the potential input.
Just what you're saying sounds, sounds big. It sounds like a big job. And I guess that's part of why this $300,000 we're spending on this consulting firm, that seems to me, to me, it seems like almost half of the work that they'll be doing is this community engagement. I mean, you talked about the GIS and some of the other sort of more technical aspects of creating the master plan, but am I, am I correct that a consulting firm will do both of those things?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then last question. For spending $300,000 on this new master plan, it's also time to make a new Parks and Rec master plan. Can we slide it in and have them look at that too? Why are you laughing?
It's kind of a separate document in terms of the state requirements and, and it's a...
But the community engagement cases could be overlapping a lot.
It's, I mean, it's possible. Like, you know, we talked to the consultant. It's possible to look at it from that standpoint and have them have input to it. What I wouldn't want to confuse the comprehensive master plan with is development of Parks and Rec plant. Because Parks and Rec plan looks at how that facility is actually constructed, what is missing, what you need. So you get into a lot more weeds, I think, in the Parks and Rec.
They just have a lot smaller budget for their community engagement, so.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Prush.
I'll move for approval of this resolution.
Okay, with a motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? Discussion? Commissioner Prush.
Just a couple of things.
Just a couple of things. First of all, it always amuses me that when there are members of the audience come to meetings and raise questions about why are we doing this, and then at the end of public comment, they leave, and they don't stick around to hear why we're doing what we're doing. But that aside, I'm certainly not a member of the Plan Commission now, but I was a member of the Plan Commission in a past life for 14 years. And I understand how important it is to have a current, relevant master plan in place when you deal with individual planning issues that come before the Plan Commission. And I know that because our current master plan each year grows more and more and more out of date, it's harder and harder for the Plan Commission to reconcile their individual decisions on a plan or a PUD or a zoning, recommended zoning change with the master plan as the master plan becomes more and more obsolete every year. The fact that our most recent one was completely redone in 1999 is a huge issue. If you, you can't imagine, well, you can't imagine the number of changes that have taken place in the community since 1999, when the last comprehensive one was done, and even when the amendments were done in 2012, the changes that have been taking place in the community between then and now, in the last nine years, it's just extraordinary. And who knows whether or not that's going to continue, but I really think that we need to go back to the community and say, okay, given all that has happened in the last 20 years or nine years, where do you see this community going forward? And that's what the master plan does, and that's why there's such a huge community engagement component of it. I look to the community engagement projects that we've done most recently for the two big parks. Number one, Normandy Oaks certainly had a huge public engagement process, and also the new downtown park had a huge public engagement process. Now, I can browse who conducted that, talked to or got comments from 1,500 individual people about what they wanted to see in that park. And that, to me, is like a model for what we would be doing in the master plan process, except perhaps on a much larger scale, because we're dealing with the whole community and not just a two-acre park downtown. So I think it's, and also, we have to remember that whenever we have had an annual goal session, for the past three or four years, redoing the master plan has been on that list, and every year, we have said, oh, this is just not the right time for it, this is just not the right time for it. And first, it was, well, we're gonna be dealing with the whole downtown project, the new downtown center project, which was an overwhelming process to go through, let's wait until that's further along. And then it was, well, the big issue is the marijuana ordinances, and that's, we had some time deadlines that we had to comply with that because of the state statute requirements. So we said, that's gonna be super time-consuming, let's wait until that's over. And we've said that a number of times, well, this isn't the right year because of this, or this is not the right time because of that. And so as Mr. Twain has said, there is no perfect time. There's always gonna be something going on that we have said, you know, this is just not the right time. The second thing I think that we have to consider is that this is not a six-week or an eight-week or even a six-month or an eight-month project. This is probably, at a minimum, a two-year project by the time we actually identify who the consultant is gonna be, and then we work with that consultant to develop a plan as to how the process is going to go forward. And then you fold it, all the community meetings are gonna be a part of it, and all of the discussions that are gonna take place at the Plan Commission level. I think at a minimum, it's a two-year process. So it's not anything that's gonna take place in, certainly in the next calendar year. I think we're not gonna be able to adapt it, I think, until like 2023. I think that's when it's gonna be complete and it's gonna be workable at that point. So there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for community input between now and then. The last thing that I was gonna mention is that, you know, we hear this periodically, oh, why can't existing staff do it? I think proportion to our community, our population, the size of our government, we are probably one of the smallest planning staffs comparatively in the whole metro area. And how they manage to get what they do done with the amount of things that are going on in the community on their own without having additional assistance is mind-boggling to me. It's, there's no way, but given the complexity and the number of public meetings and all of that, and the distillation of data that takes place in the master plan process, there's no way existing staff could handle this on their own. It was tough enough for them to put together the amendments in 2012, that's my recollection, and those are relatively modest. So I think this is something that it's finally the right time to do it. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight, there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for community engagement. This whole idea, oh, there's scare stories, they're gonna put, you know, multifamily housing in the middle of neighborhoods, you know, why one comment or a couple of comments from two commissioners gets blown up into this huge, oh my gosh, they're going to change our way of life, is amusing to me. But that's not gonna be the process, that's not the way this is going to unfold. And every community has to do it, it's a requirement of state law that you have a master plan and that it be a viable master plan, if not just a something on a piece of paper. It's something that's workable and you use, you have to defend yourself in court with your zoning decisions based upon a viable master plan. So this is something that we've gotta do, and we've gotta do it sooner or later, and we might as well start the process now.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. And I'll just, I appreciate you asking, or appreciate you stating about, you know, some folks maybe even putting words in a couple commissioners' mouths. I mean, this idea that, this idea that city commissioners would, you know, say that, oh, we're just gonna tear down neighborhoods and build multifamily in there, and they're attacking our neighborhoods, and there'll be no single-family zoning ever in Royal Oak, I think is just, you know, a little bit of an extreme interpretation of wanting to look at the data and information and enter into a dialogue about housing stock in Royal Oak, where it's best to be positioned, and how we get the most of a changing population. We're getting older. And, you know, for me, when it comes to the master plan, it's not the City Commission that's changing the master plan, the world around us is changing, and it's changed significantly since 1999. Think about how we get our groceries today, how we get our takeout dinner, think about, you know, what, 60 million people had cellphone subscriptions in 1999. Today, it's over 300 million, everybody has a cellphone, every kid has a cellphone. Heck, people don't even have PCs anymore, they do everything on their cellphone, you know, and maybe an iPad. So the world is changing, and we can choose to just sit back and kind of go against an antiquated master plan when it's convenient, or we can get together as a community, decide what the new ground rules are, so we can usher in change to the best possible outcomes for every one of our citizens. So I think it's time, and I think Commissioner Perush makes some really good points as far as, you know, zoning and planning board approvals, and how when your plan gets really out to date, you're exposing yourself to some things that you may not want to expose yourself to. Commissioner Dubach.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually something that we've been discussing for many, many years, so there is no rush. I believe the first time we talked about a complete revisit of the master plan was, Jeremy Marley was still here, that was at least six years ago. We had a robust discussion about it at a public strategic planning meeting about whether or not this is something we needed to do. At the time, we were discussing items that have just radically changed in the last 22 years since we wrote this master plan, like the need to really aggressively pursue environmental sustainability, address affordability in senior housing in a much, much more aggressive way than is considered in the current master plan. The fact that walkability means something much different now than it did 22 years ago. We did do the non-motorized plan, but even that was 11 years ago, or 10 years ago, and needs to be, we need to consider, you know, this whole concept of, what is it, seven-minute communities, where everything is within seven minutes of where you live. And the business landscape has changed dramatically since our master plan was originally written, and it's not currently equipped to address that. Now, I don't understand the need for the fear mongering and the wild rhetoric about what's gonna happen, multifamily housing and some attack on single-family housing. To my knowledge, most of us live in single-family homes, single-family neighborhoods. So that's a mystery to me, why folks want to bang on that drum as opposed to have a conversation. It's certainly never a good time, certainly in the wake of the 08 crash, it wouldn't have been a good time to have this conversation. You know, we have shifting population demographics, the Great Tsunami means things are gonna change wildly, so that means it's not a good time. You know, the rising frequency of intense storms means there's gonna be significant change in how we have to address our infrastructure. So do we have to wait to figure out what the climate looks like in 10 years? Is that when it's a good time? I'd say, you know, as exhausting as the conversation seems, we have to have it, and yes, we have to address things that residents are bringing to us, and it doesn't mean that it's gonna happen, like what's called the granny cottage above the garage. Residents keep raising this with me, they want to have that option. And I feel like we owe it to residents to have the conversation. That doesn't mean that it's something that's gonna happen, but we have to create an environment and a space to address those requests, and if the answer is no, then we should discuss it and say why the answer is no. So, you know, not a rush, first time we talked about this, many, many years ago, we actually budgeted for it this last year, so we had at least four public discussions at public meetings about earmarking $300,000 for this. And I assume our intent is not to make sure we spend that $300,000, we want to make sure we had enough budgeted for to cover the cost, but that hopefully, as bids come in, that's not exactly where we land. So, I mean, for all those reasons, like, yeah, it sounds like a lot of work, and I know staff knows it's gonna be a lot of work, I think it's appropriate to spend this money so staff can keep the business of the city running while we go through this and engage the public around this. I would hope that we can have reasonable, thoughtful conversations about what this means for the future of our city, and I think the vast majority of Royal Oakers want to engage in that reasonable, thoughtful conversation. Like, unfortunately, we heard some comments tonight that are not reasonable, but I think as we reach out and embrace a broad swath of the community in this dialogue, I think it's gonna get us to a really positive place, and I think it's time. So I will be supporting the motion.
Anybody else? All right, and I'll just add, anyone that has a question is why we're doing this, I think you heard a little bit tonight, but I also encourage you to go back and look at the Planning Commission discussions, and I mean, we have seven community volunteers on that that, you know, have been doing planning for a long time, a lot of engaged discussions that explain why and how, and, you know, the different types of things that have popped up, and if it's of true interest to you, to get that question answered, why, go back and watch the Planning Commission's when this was discussed, and I think hopefully you get a better idea of, you know, some of the thoughtful dialogue that people who give their free time, many hours a week to look at this stuff, you know, came to a recommendation for, so. All right, with that, unless there's any other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, the motion passes. All right. Mr. Twain is gonna get started on that RFP right now. All right, well, that brings us to the end of the agenda this evening. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our fine community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Perush? I think she moved to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on this very important and critical motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourn.